I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. We'll begin with the minutes of our previous meeting on April the 18th. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I approve.
I'll second that.
The motion of Dale Second of Tracy to approve the April 18 minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Okay, first up, representing the Fayette County Transit, David Lane.
Good afternoon. I'm Neil Salem, David Lane. I'm the director of the senior center. I'm here representing the Fayette County Transit. We've had another increase in the last quarter of our ridership, which is good. We had 8,447 passengers. The total revenue, passenger revenue, of 11,381. Our total expenses for this quarter was 124,116. We had two claims to ask the commissioners to approve this time. One is the CARE Act funds for 28,622. The second claim is from the 311 program of 61,397. We also matched this amount for what our local funds. So we're asking for $90,019 for this quarter for our operating expenses. Anyone have any questions?
Glad to hear our ridership is up.
Yes.
That's good.
We still want to get some more vans, maybe in the fourth quarter. We also need to hire a couple of drivers. Everybody knows anyone, put some extra work. We need them.
Yes, we are continually needing drivers over Fayette County Transit. If anyone knows, if anyone that likes a... That's a pretty good part-time gig, isn't it, Dave?
Yeah.
Easy work.
It's ideal for someone semi-retired, wants a little extra money, a little time. It's a truly good deal. And we try to be adaptable to your schedule sometimes. So if you only work three days a week, fine, we'll work it out.
Is one of you interested?
Not yet.
Okay.
I'll be in a few years.
Okay. You need approval, you need approval of your claims for $90,019?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll give you $90,019.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale Second of Tracy to approve the current claims of Fayette County Transit in the amount of $90,019. Is there any further question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Is that all you need, Dave?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks for coming in.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Fayette County Extension Office, Heather Caldwell, here for 144 requests. Heather, you seem to hire a lot of people this year.
It's Apollo 3 that we're hoping for this time. So I've got a 144 for nine break for office manager. So I will turn that on and to you guys. She's scheduled to start May 15th. And we do have two summer assistants that we're bringing in as well, Cassidy Crome and Grace Williams. So they will be starting, one on May 15th, one on June 5th. So we will have a full office just right when we need it. So the summer is rapidly approaching for the fair, as you all know. So I just wanted to give you guys an update too on the numbers. For 4H, we've got 362 traditional members, which is up from about 20 from last year. Almost 25 now, and many members, we've got 97. So just shy of 100, up 10 from last year. So I think we're seeing an uptick in our numbers, which is what we want to see, what we've been working for for the last couple of years. So it's coming to fruition.
Okay. Has your new office furniture arrived yet?
Half of it has. Josh and me at Screw did a great job setting up the first desk and a chair that we've got. The other desk is to arrive Thursday or Friday this week. And we'll hopefully have that up before then everybody starts on the 15th. So hopefully the timing will be perfect.
Okay. On this 144, and this is through your new office manager.
Correct.
How do you pronounce her first name?
Naya.
Naya.
Yes.
All right, what's your pleasure on this?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale Second of Tracy to approve the 144 request for Naya Frank as the new office manager in the Extension Office. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. There you go.
Excellent. Sounds good. I'll give you a quick update too on a couple of things. We're still doing programming at schools. We're getting sort of a mad dash before the end of the year for teachers' requests, which is great. Stephanie's been doing Captain Catch, which is financial responsibility for third graders. She's been in Grandview the last couple of weeks. We'll continue that into almost the end of the school year. We've got a nature teaching program, which is just teaching kids about the benefits of nature, being outside and gardens and birds and that kind of stuff. So I've been working with first graders at Fayette Central. They've been great, very energetic. So that's been a good, a good time. Got a new, you guys have heard us talking about our aerospace program that we've done at the airport. We're on our fourth class that will start tonight, actually. So that has still been continued interest in that. So we're going to continue that with beginners. And then as all 4H members are aware, May 15th is an important deadline for getting animal ID into the system and any DNA paperwork in for the state fair. So we've got a lot to, May 15th is a really important deadline. We're getting emails and posts out to everybody, so hopefully we'll get those done. That's it? You guys have any questions for us?
Well, thanks for the report, Heather.
Not a problem. Thank you guys for your support.
All right. On our agenda, looks like Kelly Van Meter has a 144 request. She's not here. Okay. We have a 144 request from the 911 department.
Is this part-time, part-time?
Part-time.
Part-time? All right, I guess I'll make a question. Hire 144 request, Kelly Van Meter, 911 department for part-time for Sean McNew.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Tracy Second of Dale to approve the 144 request for the hire of Sean McNew, a part-time employee at 911 dispatch. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Okay. Probation Department, Mr. Ryan Seger. He has a 144 request.
Do you? Just pass that down if you'd like to look at it. We've found a candidate for our open probation officer position. So I'm just here to request approval for that hiring. Her name is Alexandria Horni. She can start May 15th. I think we have approval.
Is this by any chance the vacancy that Lauren Smith slept behind?
Yes, yes it is.
Okay.
I'll make a question, approve that hire of Alexandria Horni for the adult probation officer starting May 15, 2023.
Sir.
We have a motion by Tracy Second of Dale to approve the 144 request in probation department for the hire of Alexandra Horni. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Is that all you need, Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. For the area planning commission, Bill McDaniel, you're here. Do you have anything to do?
I'm just here to give you an update. I had to, so I spoke with Adrian. It is that the consulting engineer project is starting to pick up. So he'll at least be able to help next week. So what we'll need to do is when Adrian goes out on inspections, I'm going to go out on inspections. Now I know anything that's inside, I won't have difficulty with. But I'm going to be testing to see how things are going to go on the, on actually new job site, new construction. So that's going to be a test for me. So that's going to see what I'm going to need is I pull out some knee braces and then also compare the cane versus my hiking poles. See what's going to help keep me stable. But that's just to give you an idea of when. Now it's been 11 weeks, still making progress. But it's, but I just want to let you know what's going on with everything right there. Me, and then if there are still issues with me, you can function on some job sites. We can talk to you about that. Because the whole thing was understanding with Adrian that it's while he's doing the, which is why it was Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, is because he was working on, because the design part of the project, which he is out of, he's up in Illinois. Now they need to, they're going to install, installing and checking, working on the equipment. So that's why he's going to have to be there during the week. So the end is done with that understanding, so it'll be kind of like this anyway. And you know, the whole thing with Adrian is he went ahead and did this. I mean, his and actual friendship is why Adrian ended up dealing with this.
Okay, well, you've come a long way, Bill.
Yep. I've got a ways to go.
Yeah.
I'm finding out that it's, why does it take so long to recover from knee replacement? Mostly it's just the, especially you get older, the amount of possible muscle mass, muscle atrophy, as it takes them off just to build muscle, muscle back up. So Vivian asked me a little bit ago, is my going out west this year? It's like, nah, gonna be able to handle it.
And so soon you cruise down Snake River.
Someday. But I just wanted you all to know what's going on with that.
Okay, well, appreciate the update.
So if I say that I have any other issues, I'll let you know immediately what's going on.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
And by the way, I do this as a just in case. So I guess I'm going to need to use it.
Yeah, play it safe.
Yeah, because there's times where it feels particularly weak. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Bill. EMA Director Wade Walling, Wade, do you have anything today?
I just have a couple of brief updates, let you know what I've got planned for tonight's meeting at the county. That and to also let you know, I tested all the panic alarms in the courthouse. I took them all, tested them through the radio. We have five that are broke. And I reached out to Response Technologies. They sent me a quote for 10 panic buttons, new panic buttons. So I will be asking for funding for that to replace the five that are broken. Then a few of the offices had three panic buttons in their offices. They only got two back because I had to redistribute the ones that I had that were working to make sure that all the offices had one. Now there's a few offices that still don't have a panic button. But they didn't have one to begin with. So I'm going to request 10 new panic buttons, just so we can get those in all the offices in the courthouse. The other things that I wanted to update you on for tonight, I'm going to ask for an additional appropriation for $2,000 for our Sentry siren, the tornado alert siren. And what that will be for is a radio control box that'll allow dispatch to activate that in the event that we have a tornado warning or a major storm approaching to warn people in Fayette County. And then shipping the old box back, once we do that, we get a $500 discount on that. So that will also pay for the electrician to install it on the pole before we set the pole and set it up there and get everything going and move on that. Next, I'm going to request a $10,257.82 to install a repeater in southwestern Fayette County, which will help alleviate the dead zone where our first responders cannot get radio traffic and there's very, very little cell service. Have to be on a top, a very tall hill to be able to even get cell service. And then I'm going to ask for a mobile radio and a portable radio out of that to replace the broken radios. The state will no longer issue IDs on. And I even tried to sleep talk several people into programming the radios for me anyway. And because the state's not going to support it, they will not do it. So they're basically paperweights that we need to dispose of. So I have a mobile radio that needs thrown away and then a portable. And I need to get those replaced so we can have current communications. And that way I can communicate with all the departments that I need to. And then my last little thing was I'm just going to ask to fund from a 40400 line item being moved to a 2020290 to cover some invoices. I've been working with Terry on those and she said they should come out of this line item instead of this line item. So I'm just going to ask that we transfer this one. So that's it for me, unless you have questions.
On that repeater, isn't there a repeater down there in the south end of the county now?
Everton has one and Bentonville has one. And neither one of them really touch southwestern Fayette County.
So we need a third one, more of the, towards the southwestern county.
Right. And I have one sitting in my office. I have the antenna with it. We just have to have it installed and updated with the current programming. So the cost for that, through JAK Communication, which is our vendor that we bought it through, to get it all updated and ready to be installed, that's included in the quote, in the $10,000 quote.
Okay, well, that ought to help.
Yes, it'll help a lot.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Highway Department, Jay Havlin. Jay, do you have anything today?
Good afternoon. Let's let you know that the brush cutters moved back to July 5th. They said they're having trouble helping keep the factory going. So it's going to be a month later when we figure it out. And we've been replacing cans. I think we've got five left to do on the list we started with. I think we had 24 on the list to start with. And now, I even say we're not going to find more before we get them on the list. Because they pop up there every time you turn around, there's one or two popping up. But we're trying to mow. I've had one guy out mowing, we're patching, get what trees we can. We just stay at it, it's all we can do. We've got some pieces we're still waiting on for the paper to get it ready, on the screed, on the paper, because the side adjustment's right on the road. The springer all broke on it and everything else. And they didn't fix it up their calisther because it wasn't one of their screeds. It's that I have to mark the screed. So we're good to fix it as soon as we get the parts in. Then we'll start covering these cans.
Okay. Now, have they got the engine fixed on that thing?
Yeah, everything else is good to go except for the pieces on the screed back there.
Okay.
We could use it like it is, but it doesn't do a very good job. I'd really have a big strike and we'd go out and use it.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. And next week, if it's going to stay up in the seventies, we'll probably try to install a truck house through this thing.
Yeah, it's good.
I'll call you and let you know when we do it.
Okay, we'll do that. I've got high hopes for that thing this time.
Keep your fingers crossed I like it, son.
I will, I'll keep them crossed. And it's too bad about that brush cutter. That brush cutter was originally going to be here this week, wasn't it?
Yep, it was supposed to have been here first of the week, first of the month.
Yeah.
They said they got behind because people taking off and not wanting to work. I see it everywhere. You can't get anybody for part-time or anything like that.
Well, that is Florida now.
We still got one truck driver position open and at the end of the month, we'll have another one. So.
Well. Well.
Do you post on that? Jay, do you, has post when you have job openings? How do you handle that?
We usually put an ad in the paper. And we were mainly getting people with Class B license and we require a Class A because we pull trailers and stuff like that, we haul equipment. And they don't want to spend the extra money to get that Class B changed to a Class A. But it's the same cost as going to get a new license. You're going to pay $5,000, that's a lot of money chunked out for a job right off the bat, especially if you're not working full-time.
Yeah, that's for sure.
That's all I have.
Anybody got anything else for Jay? I'm going to let you off light today, Jay. Thanks. Maintenance Department, Josh Jarboe, do you have anything you want to report today?
Sure. All right. So I've got a few things that are going on. I got in contact with somebody today about the front of the building here, courthouse, to do some tuck work on the bricks that are kind of crumbling out. He's going to come in, he's just going to, you know, tell us what we need to do in order to fix it, maybe write something up, just to give me an idea of what we're, what we're looking at. The steps are kind of crumbling too on the sides. For the meantime, I'm going to shoot some concrete caulk in there and seal it up because it's going to end up screwing, messing up our foundation. Water gets down everywhere and freezes and so forth. So that's something going to happen. Also, the VIVs here in the courthouse, it seems like every time it gets cold, somebody's calling me, telling me they, they're cold. So I've had North in here working on those. It's going to end up turning into a little bit of a project in the future if we don't, you know, take care of it now. It's been, I don't know the exact, there's, there's different ways we could go about it as far as like treating the water because they're just getting all grimed up. We actually had to take one out last week. He had to take it home and clean it just to come back and put it in. And the individual who we did, they're very happy now. It's the first time they've felt heat in two or three years. So that's something that is going to have to happen soon. And then I talked to my uncle when he was still working about getting a truck down here to shake up the trees out in front of the courthouse. They're hanging out pretty far, so we're going to do that. And then also the flower beds. I ordered 28 plants, I think, and we're going to plant those around the flower beds, clean it up, make it look good out, out front. I've been having John, my part-time man, he's been power washing the building. I think overall, the appearance of the courthouse went up dramatically here in the past couple of weeks. As far as the jail goes, I'm working with North again. Kevin is supposed to give me a quote or a number for a split unit in control. So Air Handler 10, that's the one that had that dirty outside filter. I cleaned it up. We're actually getting a lot of airflow through there right now. However, from that unit to where control is, it's quite a jog of ductwork. And over the weekend, it was, it wasn't like in the danger, danger zone, but it definitely needs to be cooler. It was like 75, 76. I had to throw everything in manual and suck in some outside air. It went down, I mean, it's sitting at 69 right now, so, which is where it needs to be. So that's just something that, you know, moving forward with the big job, the air handler replacement, it's going to help out tremendously. And then just the, all the handrails on the courthouse and stuff. If you guys see yellow tape, it's because the handrails are going to be wet. We're going to paint them black. As well as the jail, we're going to paint that. We've got it cleaned and we're going to paint, you know, everything white. We already been working on the steps, shaved all the rest off of them. Trip hazards, now they're no longer trip hazards. Repainted those. And in my opinion, the pneumatics, I know that whenever we're talking about the air handler systems over there, like that 100% has to go because the only reason I was able to get airflow is I had to go down there and hit the pneumatic pump. Once, once it actually released, then my arms opened up, but I had to do it manually. So just for future reference, when we do decide what we're going to go with, pneumatics are no go, in my opinion. So that's really all that's going on right now.
I'll tell you, Josh, you and your crew have got the grounds looking really nice out there right now. If we can keep that up all summer, I think that'll please a lot of people. How about it? You got anything for Josh?
No.
Good job.
If you get bored, you can go over to the basement of the jail and check it out too. You'll be very impressed. I thought I was somewhere different, but they've been over there cleaning this morning and it looks amazing, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for the update, Josh.
Yep.
County Recorder Lisa Witt, are you back there? There you go. You got a 144 request?
Yeah, my 144 is kind of a backtrack, actually. On April the 18th, 19th and 20th, I attended, along with Beverly Gazelle in my office, the, the Inner Recorders Association Conference. Ruth Nutty, the former recorder, had recommended that we both would attend that. So Ruth had came in to work for me those three days and I didn't realize I had to do a 144. There was a misunderstanding. So I'm just asking now that that would be approved. I know it's after the fact, but we won't be, we won't be doing it again in the future. But this was our first one and with Beth and I was just coming into the office, she felt it would be a good idea for us both to go to that.
Yeah, technically as of January 1st, Ruth wasn't a county employee anymore.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We want to make sure she gets paid though for the couple of days that she did come in and work.
Yeah, she actually got to come in, she would come in and my understanding is that homeschool group went through and she got to do a little tour with them and kind of explaining that the recorder's office is the first office established by the county government by the constitution. It's kind of cool.
It was. Yeah, she shared that day that in her eight years as a recorder, that she had never gotten to do that. She'd always wanted to be able to show a group of kids. So it worked out to be really perfect timing for her to be there.
Yeah.
We have to approve, bring this 144.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale Second of Tracy to approve the 144 request for the recorder's office for Ruth Nutty. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. There you go, Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay. Sheriff Jones, do you have anything for today?
Yes, sir. This is a room, please. Just here to finally get the signatures that I need to share food service vendor approved. We've decided to go with a canteen or TIGs, they go by two different names, I guess. Again, I've been looking at food service vendors since probably November of last year and this is by far the best deal that the county can make.
Okay.
I got the signature page for the contract. I'll get it, I can get the signatures.
Has the county attorney had an opportunity to review this?
He has. He sent it to me in an email mid-April. I've reviewed it, and I don't have any issues. We're good to go.
Okay. Alright, what are we talking money-wise here, Sheriff?
Uh, I think we talked about that last time. It's, I mean, it all depends on how many inmates and how many meals we have to feed throughout the year. But we're looking around two-fifty, I think, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to feed the inmates. It's a dollar, or it depends on how many inmates you have. Our ADP, average daily population's around one-thirty, so that puts the meal at, I think it was a dollar ninety-two. And then, come January, I'm going to change commissary companies because they'll give us a nickel cut on those meals if we go with their commissary. And their commissary's gonna give us a better percentage than what we're currently getting now, so that just made sense. So knocking down to a dollar eighty-seven a meal. Which the current vendor we have, uh, they're wanting me to sign, renew all the contract, and it was gonna go up to, I think it was two-seventeen a meal, so it's quite a bit of saving. Think after the commissary's done, we're looking at saving around, I think it was seventy thousand dollars a year. And that's just going off the one-hundred-and-thirty inmates a day. It could be lower, it could be higher. You never ruin that.
Okay, so our current provider was...
Tiger.
Tiger, and then they, they were looking at an increase to two dollars and seventeen cents?
It was something like that. Other numbers in front of me, but yeah, it was something like that.
Okay.
We're currently paying more than a dollar ninety-two a meal. So this is cheaper than what we're currently paying, and quite a bit cheaper than what they're wanting us to start paying.
Canteen says here, from one-hundred-and-thirty-one to one-hundred-and-fifty meals per day, they can provide those at a dollar ninety-one a meal.
Dollar ninety-one, okay, yeah. And that's usually where our jail population is. They provide the staff, we provide the inmate workers to help serve the food, but they provide the staff and the insurance. It's their employees. We don't have any benefits or anything to pay for these employees. It's theirs. And they've already reached out to some people, they've got it on Indeed and other things, trying to get people hired, because that's sometimes a difficult task.
I don't envy it. I wouldn't want your job.
It's a pretty standard contract. It looks just like the one Tiger had, except for the food prices are gonna be cheaper. And they've already came down and gave us some good ideas. Currently, they're getting silverware every meal, so now we're just gonna give them their own utensil, and they'll keep it when they get booked in, they keep it along with the cup that they, so we're not buying styrofoam cups. They'll keep the cup, and that's what they use until they leave. So that should save you some money also.
Okay, when, uh, okay, this becomes effective May twenty-ninth?
Yup.
Does that give you all the time you need to make this transition?
Yeah, we've already talked to Tiger. They're aware. Their last meal will be May twenty-eighth, and then Canteen will come in that night and start stocking the food and preparing the breakfast, and then we'll go from there.
That's really good. Looks like they provide even, it's more than just the food, really.
Oh, yeah.
It's really quite a bit for that amount. It's really good.
And Tiger has let our kitchen, the inmates' workers have sort of set up shop in there, and we're not fans of that. We go in and clean it out, and then the next week it's back to the way the inmate workers want, so we'll fire them, and then get new inmate workers, and eventually they'll do what they want. The ladies from Canteen came in and said, "Oh, no, this isn't gonna happen. Everything is going to be how it's supposed to be." So we're pretty happy with that. And I'm not sure if that's just because Tiger's on its way out, and we don't care too much, but we're pretty excited about the change.
Is this agreement, is it for every year that you would sign it again, or is it a certain amount?
Uh, it's a four-year agreement.
Four-year, okay.
So it'll last in my first term, and then we'll go after that, see what happens.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with Canteen Services for jail food service.
Say it.
Okay, we have a motion by Tracy, Inspector Madell, to approve the four-year contract between Fayette County and Canteen Services to provide meals at the county jail. Is there any further questions? All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
But three ayes, Jay. You got that signature page there, we can take care of this for you right now.
Alright.
Jay, will you need a copy of this signature page?
I will.
I hope their cuisine is more palatable.
We're hoping. They say it is. They're more than welcome, they say they have, they will let us try out stuff, and we have to do a survey on it to see, to tell them what it tastes like, so you're more than welcome to come over and fill out a survey and tell them what you think. Does anyone have a question for you?
After everybody's signed, we make sure that the auditor gets...
I'll get the whole contract.
Okay.
Alright. Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Surveyor Bill Mackey. Bill, do you have anything?
I have anything, yeah.
Okay. Veteran Service Officer Ron Stevenson is here. Ron, do you have anything today?
I just got a couple things. Good afternoon, everybody. Just an update on the VA van program. They came back and took the Escape back. Ford Escape, that was the one that had the catalytic converter cut out of it. We got it repaired here locally at Tim's Muffler. They did it for like three hundred dollars for a catalytic converter. So, just out of the gracious nature that they have there for veterans and what we had, VA came back, sent two drivers down, picked up the vehicle. The other vehicle is the Ford van that had the gas tank drilled out. That van has been towed to a repair shop here locally. They're fixing it, and then, once that's repaired, then we'll drive it back up to the VA and turn both of those vehicles in. So we will no longer have any issues with vehicles being vandalized or not being, well, they would've been able to be used, because I'm an authorized driver now for the VA. But with that, that program is not defunct. It got revived thanks to Sharon Cranfield's generosity and allowing us to use her van from the House of Hope. And also, I have five drivers now that have stepped up and volunteered to be on call at any time to do any of these things. So it's, we're able to get it back to where we wanted it to be and everything. On a personal note, I had shoulder surgery a few weeks ago. So I'm rehabbing that, but it's all off-hours kind of thing, so it doesn't stop me or prevent me from anything. But I did have a setback. I sprained my shoulder walking through a door because somebody slammed the door open into me. So I'm kinda back to where I was day one. But just doing rehab and everything, so just to let you guys know, but it's all non-work-related and everything, so... Just a freak accident on a shoulder that I didn't want to have messed up, so... But other than that, the programs, veterans' programs are going good. One of the other programs that I assist with is the Indy Honor Flight, where we take veterans to and from, we fly veterans to and from the memorials in DC. We're gonna have a signup event on June the third at Tim's Muffler, Donald Park Road. They've offered up their location as a spot to get people signed up for the Indy Honor Flight, but I'm also using that opportunity to get veterans signed up through my office, because when I look through my database, I have the sixteen to eighteen-hundred-plus veterans that we have in Fayette County, I only have about four-hundred in the program, in my database, which is, it's unacceptable for me, because we're not, I gotta get people to come in. A lot of them don't know about the office, which is troubling, so getting the word out. But I'm gonna use that as a platform to get people informed, get them signed up, so that way I can talk to them about their benefits and stuff. So that's a program that's coming up. But the Indy Honor Flight plus that is something that we're doing. And then, Armed Forces Day's coming up, so talk about some ideas or if anybody's got anything that companies or places that want to do something, anything like that, it's something we want to do, for sure.
Do we currently have anybody scheduled for an Honor Flight from Fayette County?
As a matter of fact, we do. Terry Lunsford, he's over in Brownsville, which is kinda, I know it's borderish. But I also have Dwayne Robinson, who owns Robinson's campground, Donald One Twenty-One. He's a standby on this flight, and the one good thing about this flight is I'm the bus captain for it. So I've been going out conducting interviews along with Cheryl Reno, who is a Fayette County resident as well. Her husband, Mike Reno, Vietnam vet. But I have two volunteers from Fayette County who stepped up to be guardians, because the veteran goes with a guardian. So basically, if I go, my son would go with me. You have to have a guardian with you. So when that person is there to help that veteran and assist them in any way, push their wheelchair, carry their bags, whatever, that's their job. I did it for Joe Mingendoele last year, where I was a volunteer guardian. But we have two Fayette County people who volunteered their time to take on these guardians that they did not even know. One of those is a Marine out of Rush County. I teamed him up with another Marine from here in town, Tiffany Bell. That's gonna be, that's gonna be a wild day, because two Marines together. I'm sure they'll take a hill somewhere. And then, Amy Bear's another one. She works at Walmart here, old-school maid-of-mine since the third grade. She is assisting another veteran that's out of Greenfield. We did not have a guardian. And if these people didn't have guardians, they're not going. That's how important the guardian program is. And between Cheryl and I, the guardians have a five-hundred-dollar donation or figure whatever to help offset the cost. Veteran flies for free, but the guardian has a very financial piece to it, but we were able to raise their money for them to go. They didn't pay a dime out of their own pocket. That was a generosity from Alliance Club, Tim's Muffler, private funding through people that just know about the program. Me and my son, through our company, Out California, we sponsored and paid for one of them. Because I know what it was like. Like when I went, Urban Linklers donated money, The Jungle, The Gym. Leslie Bailey donated the rest of it, so I didn't pay a dime out of my own pocket, even when I went. But there's a lot of generous people here in this town that are looking to help support any way they can, and this is, they were able to do it, so... And then we have some other ones that are on the list to fly. And then I have signed up probably six or eight people to be volunteers for the Indy Honor Flight program from Fayette County. This is an entire volunteer program. No one gets paid, including the director down, no one gets paid to do this. It's a private charter airplane that we take, and it's about a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars every flight. That's what the cost is.
Wow.
But it's just a day trip, it's just a day trip. So we fly them out in the morning, go to World War II, Vietnam, Korea, Lincoln Memorial, the reflecting pool. They witness the changing of the guard at the Tomb of the Unknown in Arlington National Cemetery. Then we take them past Iwo Jima. There's a tower that the country of Norway donated to the United States for what we did for them during World War II. It's on the backside of the Iwo Jima Memorial. And then we finish up at the Air Force Memorial, and we also drive by the Pentagon, too. So they see the side of the Pentagon that was taken. Which, I worked there for three and a half years after all that happened, but the slab that is inside the memorial with all the names on it is Indiana limestone. Three-fourths of that building is made out of Indiana limestone. So you can imagine how I feel working in that building, knowing that that building was built from the things that come from my home state. So, but, yeah, they get to see all that in one day. And then, the one thing that they didn't get, they get when they come home. They get a proper welcome home. Because they pack the Plainfield High School gym with about two thousand people. And they announce them individually, and they all get a hero's welcome home, which they did not get. Right now, we're taking World War II, Korea, and Vietnam veterans. And then Gulf War Memorial has been, the ground has been broken on it in DC, so probably in about two or three years, Gulf War vets will go to, or be eligible to go. But you only have to serve one day during that time period. You didn't have to be in country, you didn't have to be in the war. It's just one day during those time periods, those specific time periods, to be able to go on that flight. And that's, it's, I will tell you, it's life-changing. It is life-changing. It'll change your life, it changed mine. And I've been there. Like, when I was stationed there, we would go help out with all the Honor Flights. It's a national, it's a national organization, Honor Flight is. So we used to go and just be there for the veterans in uniform when I was on active duty, and it was just to see them, see their stories. One of the guy's last flight, just came back in April, he said, he came back and told the leadership there at Honor Flight, he goes, "In fifty-three years, all I had was hate, discontent, heartbreak, disgust, and I don't have it anymore." Because he spent one day with the Honor Flight. So it's a big thing. If you want to go, the Plainfield High School, Indianapolis, up at the airport is where we do everything, and I can get an info for you on that. You can get onto it on their websites, too. But those are all things that through my office, and I assign people out for it. I know my office says veteran services, but my job is not just to file claims. It's whatever service comes through the door, and if I can change somebody's life in there, that's what I'm doing.
Good deal. Thanks for the report, Ron.
Absolutely. Does anything?
Mural, did your mural get finished?
My mural is... My mural is, my mural took a turn. Because the guy I was having doing it, it was a rehab project for him. He had just come out of prison, as a matter of fact. But he's a tattoo artist and an artist. And if you've seen my door so far, it stops people in their tracks to look at it. While he had a setback and he is no longer able to do it, however, I do have another artist that knows him. And they were stationed together over in Iraq, and they're both artists. And she is going to come down and finish it for me. It'll just be on the weekends or whatever, and I'll go in and sit with her and talk to her and stuff. But I actually helped her submit a claim, too. So that's kind of how I met her. But, and I met her through my previous artist, but he just had a huge setback. And unfortunately, he's unable to finish it. But it will get finished. But it's, it looks pretty good. If you saw it today when you walked by. It's a different depiction. It's not just like a portrait, you know, like... It's definitely a warrior's kind of taken view on it. But right now, it's got poppy fields in it. It's got a scene from Iraq in it. It's got a scene from, kind of a depiction from Vietnam on it already, with the parachute and the wings on it. There's a valley, which signifies Iraq and Afghanistan. He started on the Navy part, so we'll have to finish that up real quick. Not that I'm partial or nothing, but it's coming along. It's just, we've had a little bit of a, had a little bit of a setback on it. But it's going to get done. Okay? All right, thanks.
And thanks, Ron. County Attorney, Mr. Weddell, do you have anything to report today?
I do not.
I take that as a good thing.
It's always good.
Councilman Red presented...
Not a thing.
Vivian Heimlich is here. Vivian, do you have anything to report?
No, I do not. Just a warm wonder.
Okay. Have any mail you need to share?
I've got one thing for Bill. Out on seven fifty north, just off of the Fayette-Rush County line, I guess you might want to run out and look at that bridge, that culvert, box over.
You told me about it. That's what you told me about it.
So I just wanted to make sure, get the message passed.
Yeah, I did tell you about it.
Okay. That's all I've got. And no mail.
We got a thank you card from that homeschool group for the tour. So we'll take that, share that. The group is based out of Baptist Temple. I cannot remember the name of the group, but the card came. It was a kind gesture. So I thought I'd share that. Thank you.
In our old business, we still got the jail handlers, air handling system on our agenda. But I got nothing to report. I haven't heard anything back from those guys yet. You guys got anything on our old business? You have anything on our new business? I will mention this, our new business, that our Monday of this week, Julie Lisa Bates sent out requests for proposals on our Lera grant application. The first response she got back was from one, one of those companies said that that was just too far for them to come. So they weren't going to give us a bid. But we're going to take bids until, I think, the twenty-second of this month. And then hopefully, at our first meeting in June, we'll be able to make an award on that. Just for everybody's information, what we're talking about, we've let requests for proposals on a sediment removal plan for Man Love Park. So they want us to get three bids on that project. So as soon as we can get three bids on it, we will make an award. And then that company, whoever's chosen, will develop a sediment removal plan for Man Love Lake this year. And then get that done. And hopefully, next year, we can actually start removing the mud and sediment and stuff from the lake itself. Quite sure they will require a total replacement of the spillway, along with a few other improvements there. But it'll be interesting to see, just when they do their sonar work, just how many feet of mud is in the bottom of that lake. Because it was, it was originally seventeen feet deep. And there's a lot of places in it now that I doubt if it's over twenty-four inches deep. So we're making, starting to make some progress on this. We started doing this, started this project last fall. So it's come along pretty well so far. So hopefully, in a month, we'll have somebody on that job. Is there any patent concerns today? Haley, you got anything? Nick, you got anything?
Not today.
Okay. All right, all that leaves is claims and payroll. We have a motion by Dale, Secretary of Tracy, to approve claims and payroll. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Three ayes, Jane. Before we conclude our agenda today, are we forgetting anything? Jane, are we forgetting anything?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you all very much. We've got a motion by Dale, Secretary of Tracy, to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Three ayes, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much.